And they make up those hours and they are already in the system, so yes, we do have to pay retirement on this.
Are there any volunteers? I'm sorry, question.
You're having to pay for the time that they're working here, their into their retirement?
Yes, ma'am.
So you pay their, like you pay Covington?
We pay whatever hours they work in Dry Ridge, we pay their retirement.
So either way, if you go full-time, you're still gonna have to pay. You're not increasing the retirement cost.
Retirement's going up in July, five percent per employee.
Yes, I'm aware of that. But as far as the number of hours that you're paying on retirement, you shouldn't have to increase the number of hours.
The question I think is you'll get, have the same number of hours with a full-time person and you just won't have as many part-time people.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
And one of the problems we're running into is, is the northern branches are absorbing and they're saying, okay, if you need overtime, you can't really work anywhere else, you can only work here. So the main objective behind all that was to staff at full-time, which ensures the citizens of Grant County that we have actual dedicated personnel to provide this service, which is absolutely the most important thing.
Excuse me, I'm not really concerned that, you know, that you don't need the monies you're asking for. My concern would be, can you prove to us with a monthly report that those runs are being ran in Cretondon? An address possibly, some kind of a monthly report of runs so that we can add this up ourselves throughout the year?
Yes, ma'am, that's certainly no problem. All of the run volume is included in every council meeting that we do in Dry Ridge for that particular reason. Should someone in the community have interest in that, they can refer to that meeting to be able to do that.
I think all the questions though has to do with, many times we'll get it and it'll be in the Cretondon area, but not necessarily in the city of Cretondon, and I think she's trying to ask if we can get it where that anything that's reported as Cretondon is in the city.
That's right.
If that can be done. I'm not trying to put words in your mouth.
No, you're good.
You asked me that before. Can that be done?
Sure, that gets it done, sir.
Okay.
Well, we can make it, we can make it be done.
Other questions by council for, yes?
I think I have a question more for just this process, not necessarily for them.
Okay.
But what is the holdup with the county doing it? So there's, there's a question that I have, and then if they do a district later, can we dissolve ours and go?
I don't know what the reason is, the county, other than, I can only guess that, just like you can, and I'm thinking because the word is tax. I don't know that, but I'm thinking that's probably, I don't know. The answer to your second question is, we can, it won't be as easy depending upon the, if we, if you adopt this and if there is a Cretondon emergency services organization, it wouldn't be simply, you couldn't just snap your fingers and do it, but it could be done over time, if there was an agreement to do it. It could merge with a county system, or it can merge with the Dry Ridge system, it can merge with any system, actually, it can merge with one out of the county. So the answer to your question is, yes, it just wouldn't be very quick, it wouldn't happen quickly, but it could be done. Now, if the county decided later on that they wanted to do it, and you all, you six, say that's fine, we want to join it, and they say that's great, come join us, everybody's in agreement, yes, you can merge.
But could we drop the tax, our district then?
The tax can be adjusted by the board as needed, yes.
Because, I mean, I really feel like it's more the county's responsibility to cover the, I mean, I, I want to, I want to, I want to provide for Cretondon, and we're responsible to make sure.
And that's the reason that Mayor Rockland and I and Mayor Skinner went to the, to talk with him, we agree with him. We think it would be much better to spread this over the entire county than have each city. Dry Ridge has been doing it for how many years?
Twenty plus.
Okay. You know, we agree with you, the burden shouldn't be on each city, there should be a county-wide system, or it should be none, one of the two, we should either not have it, or we should spread it out where it's a fair tax. So you're not getting any argument from most people.
And absolutely no argument from us, from that either.
Other questions with the council?
This is to Kim. We called the wall back, I can't remember what the answer was on this, but do you, outside of the city of Cretondon, say it's on the interstate? When you pick, when Dry Ridge picks somebody up on the interstate, outside of Cretondon, do you bill anybody, or are you completely, just let that flow?
They bill.
Well, yeah, I mean, we bill, I mean, we have a billing company that bills, you know, but the collection, you know, you can look at the collection rate is, is new.
My question's not, what are you getting back, my question is, do you bill?
Yes, absolutely, we bill.
Okay.
Every run that we make has a dedicated fee that's attached to that. Do we pursue that recovery any further than that personal, personal gain? No, sir, we don't. And that's my election of Mayor Rockland.
I, I wasn't looking to change your system.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to know, outside of the circle of the, looking at next year's for $250,000, if you're outside that circle, who's becoming responsible for these people outside of the city of Cretondon? Where does the funding come from then?
If it's not inside the city limits of Cretondon, then the county will go towards that number. The county's numbers will go up drastically, and you'll see that. I think I demonstrated to this council last year that these numbers are true, you're welcome to look at them anytime, these numbers are authentic. In order to provide the service, we have to have personnel, we have to make sure that that ambulance is sitting there in that fire station.
Any other questions about the council?
Just reviewing the timing, because yes, if, if Mayor Rockland, he makes a presentation next February, we could vote on it after that presentation.
You could.
And then that, that meets a March deadline, well, mid-February, so that gets it on, if everyone votes it.
That would be enough time to get it to Eli, yes, to get it to him, yes, yes. Anybody else? Other questions while we got these gentlemen? Nope. Okay. We don't vote on that tonight, we'll vote on that next time, okay? All right, moving next to number four. Is it number four? No, number five, isn't it? Uh, yes, this is an ordinance, ordinance number two, ordinance number two ninety-one. Twenty twenty-one. It's an ordinance of the city of Cretondon, repealing ordinance number two seventy-six, two oh one nine, dated August of twenty nineteen, and that is an ordinance that most of the members of this council passed. The reason I'm asking, I'm resenting this one for your consideration, is in that ordinance, there were advertisements and bids, I've forgotten what all was done in that ordinance, honestly. But it recited that Cretondon had no procurement code, that you were under chapter four twenty-four, that's what the ordinance said, and proceeded under four twenty-four. You did, and you have, for a long time, have, the city of Cretondon has a code of ordinances, it had and still works under chapter forty-five A, which is a uniform state procurement system that all cities are allowed to adopt, and Cretondon did in fact do so, and if you look, it's in our code of ordinances, it's on the web, and it's in the books. So that ordinance was in error in saying that we didn't have one, we did, and that ordinance did not repeal what we had. It simply said we didn't have it, so this ordinance is in fact correcting that. Now, before you decide anything on this though, in that ordinance, I think the reason you passed it, honestly, is because you also put a limit on the purchasing power of the mayor without adding, by dollar amount. Under chapter forty-five A, the mayor can spend up to, but not exceeding, thirty thousand dollars on non-bid items. The ordinance that you passed limited that to eight thousand. You can still do that, if you wish. If you wish to put a limit on what can be spent without bid, you can still do that in this ordinance, or you can pass this ordinance and repeal the ordinance that was in error, and then you can do that, or you cannot do that. It's up to you, how you want to go from this point. I'm simply asking you to look at this one, to correct the fact that in fact there was, you did and still have a uniform method of procurement, which is in Cretondon city ordinances that actually, it's so old, it doesn't even have a time on it, it doesn't ever date, it was adopted, it's been back in the eighties, so we've been operating under that since that time. Now, do they have questions on what's going on with that one? It needs a sponsor, will someone make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Todd, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second or pause, discussion.
With the, bringing the mayor's discretion back to thirty.
It would bring it back to thirty thousand dollars, it would, yes. If you adopt this just as it is, that's correct, if you keep it under forty-five A.
That's where my.
You can still change it.
That's where my motion goes, is to leave it as is.
Just to adopt this order.
Okay.
You know that, there's a discussion on it.
Yeah, but if we were to change that in the future, I'm comfortable doing what you're talking about as well, but anyway, what we would change would be the whole procurement model.
What you would think, what you would do is simply amend the adoption of forty-five A that's in our, in our ordinances to add, to take that up thirty, make it whatever number you want.
Yes, that's correct.
Or amend it the wrong time. You, you adopted something that.
Yeah.
Well, that's the advice we were given, and it was drawn up to be that way. The only discuss, the only comment that I have to make is that as long as you were mayor, I would totally be comfortable with thirty thousand, but we were under some problems. And, and, you know, in the future, it could say, council member group, we, none of us may be here that have the same problems that, you know, we had at the time, so. I would personally like to keep it limited for future council members, for that reason, just not because of you at all.
No, I understand, and that, that's where you guys said, that is an option.
The SUV that tripped that, the SUV purchase is what tripped that.
There was all kinds of things that tripped that.
Yeah, there were several purchases.
Further discussion, so are you wanting to, are you wanting to amend, to add that to this motion?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so what is the number you'd like?
At least ten thousand. I mean, we, we put it to aim, but I think ten thousand would be reasonable.
Would you still make the motion if the addition was to limit the mayor's purchasing to not exceed ten thousand on any single purchase without bid? Since that's on the menu.
We know that, no problem with the thirty, the ten's fine.
Yeah, I don't have to put in thirty.
I don't care, I just want to fix this, so you all, that's up to you all, you do what you want. So if you're good, are you good with the ten?
Really, ten thousand's enough for anybody to free him.
It is.
So you're good with ten?
I'm good with ten.
And you would maintain the second, okay, further discussion. We'll add that, Sean.
Okay, so we got, yes, yeah.
Further discussion? Hearing none, okay. We'll vote on that next, uh, next meeting. All right, there's an ordinance now, number, I'm sorry, yeah, ordinance eight, document number six, item number six, ordinance amending the solid waste collection fee. You have it in, I'm trying to find the difference. Ordinance number twenty, document two oh eight C. No, that's not it, I'm reading the wrong one again, which one is that?
Two ninety-two, two oh two one.
I don't have it either. Yes, I do, okay, it's two ninety-two dash two oh two one, okay. It's an ordinance amending the residential solid waste collection fee. We talked about this just a moment ago, but just so everybody understands what's going on, back in twenty fifteen, the code of ordinances was amended to add the amount that passes through from Republic that is aggregated at the city level, and broken down then per bill, and the solid waste collection fee for residential collections, and it's not just residential, it can be business if they have a rollout can. So it's, the way to explain it, I guess, is if you have trash that you put in the can, it rolls through, this gets added to your bill, is what it's explaining to me today. So it's primarily residential, but there are some businesses, I understand, that have the rollout can rather than, rather than a trash dump. That has increased by Republic since twenty fifteen until today, the city is actually subsidizing, I guess would be a way to say it, each person's bill by three dollars and forty-two cents. If you break it down by the number of users, and the amount that we pay per month, and the amount that we collect per month. This ordinance is to pass through, it's not, actually, it's still going to leave the city paying a additional penny, but it fluctuates some. This ordinance is to pass that through to the user, that's what this does. It makes your, you're going to see on your trash collection bill, instead of seven dollars and forty-one cents, which comes with your sewer bill, you'd see whatever that would be, ten dollars and something.
Ten dollars and forty-three cents.
Okay, ten dollars and forty-three cents instead of the seven dollars and forty-one cents. So this is not a revenue-making ordinance, but it is one that actually pays the city back for what it is paying out to Republic to collect that trash. Now, does everybody understand what that is and what's going on? Again, it's an ordinance, so it'll need a sponsor, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Michelle, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Todd, for the open discussion, do they have questions, anything concerned, anything you want to say about it?
So to clarify, people's sewer bills are going to go up by about three dollars.
Actually, this is added on to your sewer bill, so the answer is, that's correct, about three dollars and forty-three cents.
Oh, is it, is it per month?
Per month, per month, it is per month, yes. Because as it's going right now, we're paying about thirty-five hundred dollars or so per month.
Yeah, just to give you some numbers that are more, more current numbers, for example, in December, our bills came in January for Republic, it was ninety-one hundred and forty-two dollars. We also paid out a thousand dollars for trash bill cards, it's one thousand cards, a dollar a piece. So the city's paying out basically ten thousand and two hundred and forty-one dollars this month. The check that came back from Grant County Observatory that came through as the payments from the citizens was only sixty-seven hundred. So there's a three thousand, two hundred dollar-ish loss every month.
And that's each month, everybody?
And so this is not just an increase on property owners, which.
This is an increase on anybody that rolls the trash to the, to the car.
Yeah, anybody that pays the sewer bill.
Correct, yes. Well, no, you pay a sewer bill and then go on there if you have a dumpster. Okay, so it's just the people who have rollout trash, the owner people take care of themselves.
So I had noticed this when I was looking at our budget, because our revenue is eighty-seven, three hundred that we're getting back, but we were spending a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
So, big old.
So the annualized difference was roughly what?
Like forty-five thousand?
And that can, that goes up and down a little bit, you know, like I say, it's not going to be perfect, but it's going to be closer. It's not, the aim is not to make money on this, I'm just saying that, the aim is to, it's a zero out for you. Other discussion. Has got a motion, a second, again, it's an ordinance, so we don't really need a.
I'll make a motion.
We already got one. Already did it, we don't need that, we'll just have a, vote on that the next time. Okay, going to the SUV sale, I think that's the next one, isn't it?
Yes.
All right, the, there were two bids, y'all know we advertised that. I need a, first, a resolution, and I don't know that this is on the agenda, yeah, it is, the, need a resolution to claim the SUV surplus to the needs of the city. Really, all this does is allow us to dispose of it. You know, I don't see a need for it, you all do fine, but if you want to dispose of it, we need to pass a resolution saying it is surplus to our needs at this point. So is there, when someone's got to make a motion, motion by voters, a second, second by Danny. Again, those in favor, Sean, if you call the roll on that one.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Robert? Mrs. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowman?
Yes.
Mr. Duzing, that's good, Jim? Joe?
Yes, sir.
No?
Yes.
Yes. Mrs. Lowery?
Yes.
Now, having said that, we had two bids for it today, which we opened at right around noon. One bid was for three thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars, this is a twenty, what, fifteen? Park, which seems rather low. The other one was for eight thousand, one hundred dollars, and I asked Sean to take a look at the Blue Book Kelly Blue Book value, and I think some, I think Todd did too.
It ranges between twelve and twelve-five, depending on engine size and health.
You all own it, on behalf of the city, so it's up to you, if you want to accept one of those bids, you can do that. If you want to reject both of those bids, you can do that. You can, now that you bid it and gotten those bids, if you reject them, you're free to sell it in another commercially reasonable manner. I can tell you that I've spoken to someone who does this for the Northern Kentucky Water District, and they list theirs on a thing called Bid Gov, I think, I can't remember the name of it exactly, is that it, chief? You've seen it, have you?
Gov deals.
Gov deals, whatever it is. They say that they make, they picked up an extra couple thousand dollars on their vehicles if they use that, and it worked quite well. That's another thing you might consider if you want to do it that way, but it's up to you. It's been declared surplus, but it needs to be disposed of, and have, whatever's commercially reasonable for you, since we bid, if you reject and vote now, you can do that by a commercially reasonable manner. So, anybody have a?
I, I think we should reject those bids.
Okay, there's a motion then to reject both bids, is there a second? Second by Jennifer, those, those, just to pose that in first. Those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Who's the high bid?
Eighty-one. Okay, motion is unanimous. Now, if you want to, you can think about how you want to dispose of that thing, and call me, write me, stop in the office, and say you want to do it this way, or however you want to do it now, but.
With piles by the pile.
Pardon?
With piles by the pile.
They may, and if it's commercially reasonable, yeah, I think that'd be commercially reasonable, we got someone who would be willing to buy it that way, certainly. You can accept private people coming up to you and say, hey, I'll give you ten grand for that thing, you know? It's up to you at this point now, since we bid and rejected everything, but, you know, we still want it to be open and level, we want it to be transparent, and we want it to be commercially reasonable. So if you want to try running it on, what was it?
Gov deals.
Gov deals, we can do that, and see how that works, and then you can go from there, so.
Can we put a four shell sign on it, and put it out to the wards of front?
You can do that too.
You have the right to reject it on that.
You don't have to sell it, it's just like selling your own car, you don't get the bid you want. We don't have to decide that tonight, right now, if you've done what you had to do, you reject the bid, so we'll just look, look at that out there a little bit. Okay, we have another document here, is a, just a short, one-page document, a part of what we did with the, are we going to report, first I'll report to the.
I don't have.
This is the.
On the economic recovery. Oh, it's number ten.
Yes, next one.
Okay, first of all, before we get to number ten, I should really move these backward, I guess. The Economic Recovery Grant Carez Act, our committee, we got an additional forty-one and change, one at forty-one thousand.
It was eighty-seven thousand and change total, minus forty thousand, forty-seven thousand for EMS, and forty thousand for small businesses.
Okay, so the second round was about forty thousand?
Yes, exactly forty thousand.
Okay, our committee met, you're on the committee.
Yes, sir.
You weren't here.
No, sir.
I was here, Doe was here.
I was.
Don was here, and we had Nancy Dooley was on the committee, and.
David Baker.
David Baker. And we made recommendations, we made those recommendations to you all to approve as to the way that we believe that the additional money should be dispersed, and do you have that in front of you, or Sean, can you cover that for us?
Yeah, I can cover it, I didn't send the agenda, I shut down, so as mentioned before, we have forty thousand dollars to utilize for small businesses, so this went in four directions from the committee. The first level was through an encore technologies company, which is going to provide thirty-six Chromebooks, which is called a brick, they call it, in the school system, plus a charging station, or a cart, and some licenses that are required. These will be purchased by the city, and owned by the city, but also shared by the city with the school system CMG. We found out there's a grave, or a large need from the students there, especially the, I guess you call them the older kids in the elementary school, between fourth and sixth grade, when it came to the, well, I mean, we're now we're virtual for most school students, so it's been a struggle, they're really behind, they don't have, they don't have the equipment they need, so that was one number we can include, we can create. Yes, Paul.
How many Chromebooks are we talking here?
Thirty-six, plus the cart. It's a charging station. I've seen the schools, it's pretty good, to be able to set up, actually. It also charges, but also works as a. The second, the second, third, and fourth, there's three local businesses that applied for help, for aid. All three were approved by the committee and allocated funds, okay? So here's the dollar amounts, so they, again, the Chromebooks are eleven thousand, twenty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents. I put each number in the meeting minutes, by the way, for council, so we have it all in front of you. Laundromat pet grooming was eleven thousand, two thirty-six and thirty-eight cents. Tasty Subs was eleven thousand, two thirty-six and thirty-eight cents. And then Kate's Family Chiropractic was at sixty-five hundred dollars even. Those four amounts added together is forty thousand dollars, fly.
Okay, so does anybody have questions on the allocations, why the allocations are made that way, or anything else they wish to state concerning? Okay. Hearing none, need a motion to approve the recommendations, motion by Paula, is her second. Second by Doe, and if you would call the roll on that one as well.
Sorry, talking to my chair, I've got some notes coming up. Okay, Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Duzing?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Lowery?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Now, you have in front of you a single-page document called a memorandum agreement between the city of Cretondon and Cretondon Mountain Elementary School, and the purpose of that is, the Chromebooks, that was a need that was expressed by the school, they actually had a much greater need than we're able to fill with this. As you all know, kids aren't in school, or if they are, they're a couple of days a week, my grandchildren, I think they're going two days a week and then virtual three, or something like that, right now, in Grant County. And it's been that they've all been totally virtual, and it may again, we don't, you know, we don't know how this thing's going to work. But the need was expressed that many of the children don't have access to the tools, in other words, a Chromebook, that they need to do virtual learning, that they're even, they're having to share them, or they're having to, you know, it's been a very difficult situation for them to get enough of them to go around. So this is one way that we can assist a bit, this isn't going to help, this isn't going to solve the problem, but this is what we want to assist. It's going to get that many Chromebooks, I'm proposing, because of the way the law is, since we have two separate taxing districts here involved, that's us and the school, that we retain ownership of those Chromebooks, that we place them in the school, with this memorandum that you see in front of you, you've got a copy of it there, and basically, all it's going to say is they're going to, they're going to accept them, they're going to use them, we're going to retain ownership, they're going to keep up with them, and when they're finished with them, they still remain city property for disposition. Okay, and that's, that's simply because of the way the law's structured now, as far as different taxing districts involved. So, do they have a question on that part of it? Yes.
Can we get the same insurance program that they have on their Chromebooks applied to these?
My understanding is that when a child checks out a Chromebook, they require a thirty-five dollar insurance fee, or whatever it is that they have.
And they'll continue to do that with these?
My understanding is that would be correct, if they don't, we can always address that later, because that's what I understood, but we can check that. Other questions?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I think we already do that. So we, it's just a plain memorandum.
Well, we can't vote on it because I don't know.
Read the sign off.
Uh, let's see, that's, I think that's an order. It is an order, so we'll vote on that next time, okay? All right. That takes care of the memorandum, now we're under number eleven. All right, general items under eleven A, look at the reason that you see on there, two meetings per month. We have exceeded our advertising budget so far, and we're in the, what, sixth month of our fiscal year? Part of that is because we are advertising special meetings, or we have them, and, you know, every time we do that, we're going to have to pay money to advertise that. There's a case in Kentucky that says if you announce a special meeting in a general meeting, in a regular meeting, you don't have to advertise that as a special meeting. However, that's been called into question by an attorney general's opinion, saying that because the purpose of the special meeting notice is to let the public know, and the public may not have attended the general meeting, the regular meeting, that it still should be treated as a special. the regular meeting, that it still should be treated as a special meeting. What I'm getting to here is every time we call a special meeting, it costs money. If we had two meetings a month, it doesn't cost money to cancel one, if you don't want to meet, if you don't, if you don't need to meet. But if our regular meeting schedule, which has to be published by ordinance, is saying two, and then you say, we've done all the business we need to do this month, I don't want to come up there and look at you, then we just have one, okay? But we don't have to pay for that. So, does everybody see?
That's how it used to be done, wasn't it?
Well, I don't know. The downside of that is, you might have somebody show up for your second regular meeting that didn't get the word, and it's been canceled, if you do cancel one. You know, and so that's going to be inconvenient for the person that wants to come and shows up in the door block. So, you know, there's a good part of saving money, and there's a bad part of the inconveniency, someone who might show up at the meeting, and the meeting not be there. That's, you know, those are the two considerations I see in that. So, I'm going to leave it up to you all. If you'd rather just go ahead the way we've been doing it, and leave it as one, and then pay for the special meetings each time, that's fine. If you want to do two, and actually do two sometimes, and not do two sometimes, that's up to you, too. It's, you're all the money people, so think about it, what's what you'd rather do. If you want to do it, there's an ordinance in front of you. If you don't, so, if you want to discuss it, we'll take a motion and second, and then we'll discuss it. Motion of Paula, second by Danny, fourth up.
Go ahead, go ahead.
My question is, legally, we don't have to advertise that we canceled the meeting, so we would be okay, we just put a note on the door, meeting's canceled?
I can find no law that says you have to advertise to cancel. It's just inconvenient for the vote, I think.
It, it, you have to think about the public, I mean, that's why we're here, you know, I mean...
Think about it, too, is it could also be put on the city website. Or not the, the, what's that thing you're in charge of? That thing, the, the town prior, that the meeting's been canceled. That's another problem, though, we're having some difficulty accessing the city's website, we got to, we got to fix that. But any, the answer to your question is, yes, once we get it accessed, we can do that. You're correct, Danny, you can do that. So, if we got a motion, second, if anybody wishes to do it, is there more discussion? Or you want to just let it lay there and think about it, talk to your neighbors, see what they think, and come back? But we don't have to vote on it tonight, other than to get the motion on the floor. Has that any conversation about what day, what would the next meeting be? Would it be the fourth? I'm proposing, I'm proposing in this, and you can, again, make that any way you want, but I think I had in there the first...
Second and fourth.
Second and fourth, okay, second and fourth Tuesdays, but that's up to you.
We do seem to have a lot of work that we're doing and proposing to do.
We do, you're correct. We do have a lot of work, and you might need to.
Yeah.
From time to time. I'm not saying you don't, I'm just saying, you know, as a cost, the cost-saving thing is really what I was looking at more than anything. Just not spending taxpayer money when we have to. Any other discussion on it? Well, think about it, come back, prepare to vote on it the next time, okay? Uh, let's see, economic recovery recommendations. What is that? We already did that, right?
Yeah, we did.